Hey Chairman, we do have to.
No.
I'm gonna wear a jacket today.
Thirty seconds. Nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two.
Good morning. Today is July 15th and I want to welcome you to the Board of County Commissioners Meeting. I am Nicole Gibbs, your Community Relations Specialist for the county. This meeting is a continuation from Wednesday, July 13th, and Chairman, I hand the meeting to you.
Well, thank you very much, Nicole. I want to welcome everyone to this continuation of County Commission Board meeting that we started on July 13th. And the way that we're going to run it today is we did not finish the Fire District, so we're going to do that first, and then we'll come back to the regular agenda of the Board of County Commissioners, and we'll start with Bid Board. And remember that we also have an executive session at the end of the meeting. Public comment, we do have a number of people signed up for public comment, and that will be handled at the end of the Fire Order, for those that want to speak on Fire, and at the end of the Board of County Commissioners. So I just wanted to let everyone know how we're going to run the meeting. So with that, I'm going to call back to order the governing body of Fire District Number One for the 13th of July. And Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public Agenda.
Thank you. I do have one individual signed up to speak on the Fire Public Agenda, and that's Leslie Hicks. Please approach the podium, state your name for the record, and you'll have five minutes.
Thank you. When we're discussing budgets and services that are provided by government entities, these services are critical, and the topics are often emotional. What I would like to say is that when we're discussing concerns such as budgeting and service concerns, they are best discussed and they are best implemented through respectful discussions. As Commissioner Meitzner said on July 6th, and I'm kind of paraphrasing here, that how things are said matter, words matter, attitude matter, delivery matters. To that effect, I would like to suggest that when we're discussing ways to save money with things such as fire departments and fire services, that it is carefully discussed ways in which money can be spent. Calling attention to things like million-dollar fire trucks, spending $5 a gallon on gas to get lunch when other people bring their lunches, calls attention to something that people think firefighters, they sleep on the job, they get to watch TV on the job, they run side businesses, and it almost demeans the importance of their work. It makes it difficult to talk about raising their salaries, to talk about raising their benefits, because it's out there that what they do is just go buy lunch while they're on the job. Perhaps money can be saved by not taking the trucks to get food. Was enough money going to be saved with those comments to counteract the public perception that is out there, that firefighters, yeah, they work hard, but they sleep, they're there for 24 hours. What do they do, work out? What it really reminds me of are the things that we worked against in education, where people are saying, teachers only work from 8 to 3, they have summers off. Do they really need more money? Because they're not working that hard. It's the same concept of, do we really need to give the military that much money? Eh, they assign up for four years, and then they have benefits forever. And they don't take to heart the challenges that those people have, the services that they're giving, the danger that they're in, the stress on the families and themselves forevermore. So, we all do need to save money. Budgets will have to balance, services may have to be cut. But I just want to suggest that it be done respectfully, and that people think very hard about what they're saying and the perception they are giving the public with comments about things that may not make that much money, save that much money, but do create an impact. I would like to think, I'm sure, I'm sure it was an unintentional suggestion that maybe they're not doing their part by going to the stores during their 24-hour shifts, but some discussions need to be held, maybe in a forum that is not so easily misunderstood. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have anyone else signed up to speak on the Fire Agenda. Is there anyone else in the room that did not sign up that would like to speak on the Fire Agenda? Seeing none, move to receive and file. We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner, Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please. I'm sorry, there is no next item. This time, I'd like to adjourn the governing body of Fire District Number One and call to order the Board of County Commissioners meeting carryover from 13 July. Madam Clerk, probably should have called the roll, I'm sorry. Can you, roll call.
Roll call. Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Chairman Dennis.
Present. Thanks. Next item, please.
Item H, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting on July 7th, 2022.
Morning, Joe.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. The regular meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts on July 7th has resulted in two items for your consideration this morning. Our first item is utility relocation for Public Works. This is a reconstruction project on 95th Street South between 119th and 135th Streets West. The recommendation is to move to accept the quote from Rural Water District Number Four in the amount of $50,524.90. Our last item this morning is the OnCall Remodel Services for Facilities Maintenance. This recommendation is to accept the bids from Don Linger and Sons Construction Company, Encore Construction LLC, Icon Structures Incorporated, Key Construction Incorporated, and Van Asdell Construction LLC. It's at the rates listed, and it's for contract pricing that will go for two years with two one-year options to renew. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On that first item, I am, I guess I'm just curious, the Rural Water District, isn't that a private utility? And, so the county's spending $50,000, and we're providing that to the Water District to move utilities, but who owns the utilities? I guess is my question. I'm sorry.
I'm looking for Mr. Weber. He's not here. Commissioner, to get that question answered, we may have to defer this item for a week and come back.
Mr. Chairman, could we just divert Item 1 to, next time we come together, I would like to have some information about why the county's spending money. Again, I understand these are water lines, I assume. I believe that those are owned by the private utility, so I'm just wondering why we're spending money to do that. So I would like to see this diverted for now, if that's okay?
Certainly, I make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We would accept the recommendations of Board of Bids and Contracts with exception of Item 1, which I'd like to see deferred to our next meeting.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Thanks, Joe. Appreciate it. We'll see you, not next week, but the week after.
Yes, sir.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning, Commission. Tom Stoles, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent items I through N this morning.
Move to approve India through November. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Legislative Issues.
I don't believe we have anything to cover. No, I've been confirmed. Next item, please.
Committee Reports.
Commissioners, does anyone have any committee reports to report? Seeing nothing. Next item, please.
Other.
Any Commissioners have anything to cover during Other today? Commissioner Meitzner?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to remind the public that we're right in the middle of the 50th Annual USA Boxing National Junior Olympics over there at Britt Brown Arena next to Century 2. There's over 1,000 boxers from ages 8 to 18 that are in town from 42 states, and there's about 700 coaches and another 100 or so officials, anyway. And the weight class winners of this boxing competition is invited to go to the trials if they're old enough, to the Team USA Olympic Trials. And our local person, Nico, won this event twice before he was old enough to try out for the US Olympic Team. So I was able to go over there Sunday, and I've stopped in. There's like 600 fights a day, and they got four rings. It's pretty impressive. So if you're, I just wanted to give a shout out to everybody, let them know that the finals will be tomorrow on Saturday, the finals for all the weight classes. So it's very impressive, and it's kind of a big thing for, it's a national Junior Olympics. So thank you for letting me say a few words.
Thank you. Other things to cover during Other? I've just got two quick things. First of all, Sedgwick County Fair starts next week. I want to invite everyone out there. We do have a parade Wednesday evening, and a lot of events going on throughout the following week. So please come out and enjoy the fair. The other item that I'd like to mention today is that on the 25-year master plan that the Zoo Board put together, one of the items that we had on that master plan was to have a train at the zoo. And one of the very loyal and faithful members of the Zoo Board, Martha Buford, passed away here several months ago. And her family has bequeathed to Sedgwick County Zoo a train, actually two trains. And they were built here locally by Chance Manufacturing. EB Construction put all of the rail lines in and all of the stations. We're going to have a ribbon cutting on July 22nd at 8:30 in the morning, and want to invite the public to come out and see that. And after the ribbon cutting and so forth, it's open to all of the public from that point forward. There are really several neat things about that train. First of all, it's in honor of Martha Buford, and we thank her and her family very much. But in addition, as I said, it was built here in Sedgwick County, but it's electric. The things that we're doing at the zoo are to protect the environment. If you take a look at anything that's happening at that zoo, we're taking care of about 3,000 animals. And so we've been entrusted with their lives, and so we have to protect the environment. And so this train, as I said, is electric. When it pulls into its station, it's recharged with solar panels, as a large part of the zoo is. If you walk up to the brand-new entrance that we have to the zoo, there is a huge, several awnings over the entrance, and above those, actually above and below, because it picks up a bounce, too. It has solar panels in order to be able to provide power to the zoo. If you decide to drive an electric vehicle and you go out to the zoo, there are four charging stations in the zoo parking lot, and all four of those are powered by solar power. And when we're not using them to charge the vehicles, we're using them to provide the power to the buildings. In addition, to protect the animals, if you look at the glass on the front of the building, large sheets of glass have birds that run into them. And if you look closely at the glass, you're going to see that there are lines embedded in that glass, and the birds can pick that up, and they don't run into it and break their little necks and kill them. So there's a lot of things that are happening out there. You won't find plastic straws, you won't find plastic bottles. So everything is made to be recycled. But I kind of went on a little long on that, but I'm very proud of what the zoo is doing, and I am very, very proud that Martha Buford's legacy will be remembered in the future with the two new trains. So come out and see it on July 22nd. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. The annual Convoy of Hope is coming up on July the 23rd. It's a Saturday morning, it starts at 9:00 AM. There are six locations in Wichita, one location in Hutch, Valley Center, and Goddard. So please look that up on Facebook at Convoy of Hope. And this will be a drive-through event. Backpacks will be given to children, groceries, one load per vehicle, and then a welcome packet. This will happen rain or shine. So again, Convoy of Hope, the 23rd, Saturday at 9:00 AM. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else during Other?
Chairman, if I could jump in real quickly.
Certainly.
Jim Weber just texted me the item that Commissioner Howell brought up. There's a time constraint on that. He is en route here now. If we could catch that at some point, maybe after public comment, we'd like to come back to that.
Very good. And we can always bring it back to the agenda. Madam Clerk, we're going to go to public agenda next and skip executive session. We do have an executive session today, but everyone's in the audience, and so I don't want them to wait. So Madam Clerk, call next item.
Public Agenda.
Thank you. We do have several folks signed up on the public agenda today. I'll call them in order, although a couple want to speak at the end, and I will move them to the end. So the first person to speak today is Charles Mullen. Please approach the podium, state your name for the record, sir. You will have five minutes.
Thank you. I'm Charlie Mullen, and I've been in Wichita since 1968, and been in education all my life. Been in the classroom, was administrator for 57 years and 6 months, and I quit about a year ago to work on election integrity. And I found out that I was shocked at what I found out about the Sedgwick County. And so I would like to give you the things that I've researched across the states, as well as across the nations, both third-world countries and first-world countries, that they agree that these should be in place for good, honest elections. Accurate registration rules. Everybody agree with that? Accurate registration rules. Drop boxes, do away with them completely. Computers. Counters are fine. All that type of technology is fine, but not a computer that's hooked to the Internet or Wi-Fi. And you can't take a thumb drive and stick it in and send all of the results to Topeka, expect it to get there straight and honestly. There's no way that can be done. And there's a couple of other. National holidays in most of European countries, but not in the United States. And I know the county can't do anything about that. I'm just giving you the list. National holidays, mail-in ballots only to those that need them, just because it's convenient. But if you can get up and you can go to church and you can go to the doctor, you can go vote. So just because it's handy, anyway. And that mail-in ballots need to have a deadline. Our representatives and senators considered that deadline this session, and they got hung up on what time of the day should the ballots be closed. We're talking about the mail-in ballots. Everybody agreed that they should be the same day. If you don't get them in there the day, if they're not received on the day of voting, then it doesn't count. People can do that. They're smart enough to vote, they're smart enough to get stuff there. But you know what? No. That was killed in committee because they couldn't decide whether to close the ballots at 7, 8, or 9. That's nonsense. Set a deadline. In fact, I'll list the other things here. You need to be a US citizenship instead of someone who crossed the border illegally. They need to have a photo ID. We've got that one, photo ID in Central County, we got that. Prisoners and felons have no right to vote. That's nationally, not just the United States. And I came to Kansas in 68, and I was really tickled to be here, because I thought it was a great place. I lived, raised up in Oklahoma. They don't pay their teachers down there, they still don't. That's just a personal sideline. Taught in California for three years, went to Texas A&amp;M for a year, and came back glad to be in Kansas. And I've always been glad to be in Kansas until about the last three or four years. Now I found out the way that the Supreme Court is selected in Kansas is nonsense. It's the stupidest thing I've ever heard of. And if you don't know how the Supreme Court is selected, you need to find out about that. Okay? And so that's one thing. And then I find out that we have a fraudulent, incorrect election, and everything you talk about in this country is null and void if the elections are fraud. Everything. They go up there and they work, and they work, and work. But if the elections are crooked, then it's no longer a democratic republic. And that's what we're supposed to be. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Next speaker is Jan Manlove. Welcome, Jan.
Can you hear me? Is this down for enough? Hi, my name is Janice Manlove. For the record, I am on Commissioner Chairman Dennis's Citizens Advisory Board, and I'm very passionate about this issue. So in April of 2019, the Kansas Supreme Court ruled that the Constitution of Kansas affords protection of the right of bodily, personal autonomy, which includes the ability to control one's own body, to assert bodily integrity, and to exercise self-determination. Three years have passed since that ruling, and regulations on abortion in Kansas are still in place. This is the first lie that I hear, that without the constitutional amendment, citizens will lose the restrictions and regulations that are already legislated, and that has not happened. Let me talk about another lie coming from the side that wants more government regulation on private family decisions, the side that wants to take away the right to make medical decisions for ourselves, free from government interference. KSA 656733 outlawed state funding for abortion, and KSA 656736 outlawed state or municipal funding for abortion. Representative Penn lied when he said that taxpayer-funded abortions up to the moment of birth are almost certain without passing this amendment. We see Representative Penn and others working to make Kansas voters believe that there are no laws regarding abortions. He, in fact, wants to pass further laws to completely ban abortions, and the only way for him to pass that law is to actually have the constitutional amendment in place, like the one on the August ballot. We do know what the Kansas Legislature has in mind if this amendment passes. HB 2746 was introduced in the Kansas House in March of 2022, and is currently marked, died in committee, because it cannot be passed under the Kansas Constitution protections that women have today. From this, it is clear to me that what politicians like Representative Penn will attempt to legislate in Topeka, that all abortions in Kansas be banned, from the moment of conception, without exceptions. Chairman Dennis and Commissioner Howell, Commissioner Lacy did not lie when she stated this constitutional amendment would eliminate safe and secure abortions in Kansas. No legislation will stop abortions in the United States. She stated what a majority of women in Sedgwick County know, that we want the same rights that Sedgwick County men have, bodily autonomy. Without that, women have no value. Two elected men thinking they know what's best about when an elected woman should share with her constituents is arrogant and unacceptable. Value her and apologize. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Rhonda Eisenhower. Please state your name for the record. You have five minutes.
Good morning, everyone. Rhonda Eisenhower. I didn't plan on speaking today, but wanted to come and hear what was going on. So I just want to share about perspectives. Everybody in this room has a perspective. So we just heard from a woman who has a perspective on abortion. I have an opposite perspective. I hope that we could have a conversation and discuss this between ourselves. I would love to do that afterward, if you're available. I don't believe that any person has a right to take the life of another human, but I know that we differ on that. I think one thing that everybody in this room should agree on is that our elections need to be accurate. They need to be fair. You know, we went through a lot in 2020. We did. And whether you agree or disagree that there was election fraud in 2020, I think you can look with your eyes and see. What this gentleman back here read about drop boxes, you know, they're not what people say are the best for having a fair election. And I would just ask the county commissioners, you all were elected by us, and I hope that your elections were true and honest and valid, that only valid votes counted, that there weren't extra votes. And because of that, I would hope that you also would agree that any election, particularly one where we have such disagreement, needs to be accurate. And I know there's other people that are going to ask some specific questions about these drop boxes, but why are they necessary? How are we controlling them? If anybody has a doubt, do some of your own research on what just happened in Colorado in the Republican primary. There is election fraud going on. And we ask you guys, our election is in your hands, the accuracy of it. And so anyway, I just ask you to openly consider everything that's being discussed here. Are these boxes valid? Are they controlled? Are they necessary? Do we know? Can you guys assure us that our election in Sedgwick County is going to be actually what the people vote? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jane Burns. Please state your name for the record. You have five minutes.
Thank you. My name is Jane Burns, and I am listed as speaking on transparency in government. You know, anyone who has to do with transportation decisions know that I'm transparent. I'm really upfront that I'm into health of individuals through I'm transparent. I'm really upfront that I'm into health of individuals through safe, active transportation. And everyone else in transportation decisions thinks otherwise, but I'm straightforward. I am seeing churches deal with issues not for advocating candidates, which they cannot do and be tax-free, but they can advocate for issues. So churches have signs in front of them. They're transparent about where they are on this current issue of vote, yes and vote no. I'm applauding transparency, that elected officials can be transparent on where they are, where they personally think and believe and will vote. I personally think that transparency in elected opinions is valuable to all their constituents and to everyone else as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jane. Next speaker is Mike McCorkle. Please state your name for the record. You will have five minutes.
Thank you, sir. My name is Mike McCorkle. I currently reside in District 3. I'm here today in support of Commissioner Cruz. I grew up here in Wichita, enlisted in the Army after high school, lived and worked overseas for many years before returning to Wichita to look after my aging parents in 2019. I believe it is important to speak out for equality for all Americans. Here in Kansas, there is an amendment to the Kansas Constitution on the August ballot that will restrict abortion access for Kansas women. I believe it is wrong, mean-hearted, and will negatively impact many Kansas women. I support the vote no effort and thank Commissioner Cruz for her leadership in this important cause for Kansas women. It is my hope that voters who value equality for women in Kansas, true equality for women around the country, will vote to defeat the proposed amendment that would restrict healthcare options for Kansas women. I also hope that voters will vote for candidates who support the vote no effort in all county districts up for election. Thanks for the opportunity to address this elected body and on this important topic. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Next speaker is Leslie Hicks. Please approach podium. He will have five minutes.
The first speaker on July 6th stood up and said, "I will leave it to you," speaking to the commissioners, "I will leave it to you to decide if this is something that is appropriate to push out with taxpayer funding, or whether or not there is a gray area that commissioners like to operate in, and whether or not you want people to have that type of person elected to office." I am surprised that with all the discussion that followed, that no one answered or corrected this comment. It is not up to the commissioners to decide if that type of person is the type of person to be elected to office. And yes, it is apparent that the commissioner that issued the newsletter is the type of person that people wanted elected to office. Now, will that continue? We shall see. But timing and manner in which this was brought to discussion is completely disheartening. The discussion is over. Depending on a person's viewpoint and ability to detail words, parse the grammar, that there was misinformation. It essentially boiled down to one word. I would point out that there has been several items that day that were incorrect, incomplete, contradicting. At the beginning of the July 6th meeting, a county employee stated the August 2nd election was a primary. That is true. But the statement overlooked the fact that it was also a special election. Thank you, Commissioner Cruz, for the efforts you have done in publicizing that both elections are to occur. Throughout the July 6th discussion, at least once, a commissioner had to be corrected as to the date or type of election. The main concern was the use of the word "would" as opposed to "could." And yet, during the public agenda, several times, the speakers did use the same word "would," but there was no comment, there was no correction, there was no discussion. The amendment vote is important. It is critical. It is just as critical that information and discussion about this amendment needs to be respectful and balanced. The manner in which the July 6th meeting unfolded did not give the impression of balance, regardless of the intent. But maybe just as importantly, it did not give many citizens the impression of cooperation and respect between the commissioners. Without respect between the commissioners and without respect in a way to resolve problems, it is easy to be disheartened. It is easy to lose confidence in our government, and I think there's a lot of lack of confidence in our government on many levels. Perhaps that's the most important part about this amendment vote, is that we have to have confidence in our elected officials. We have to have confidence in how any result of that vote comes out. We have to have confidence that people will be respectful to each other, including on the commission. And I would just ask that there be the actions thought out carefully between commissioners, between work with the employees of Sedgwick County, to actively implement the respect that I am sure you all intend to have for each other, but that is not always forthcoming at these times. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Rosie Schmidt. Please state your name for the record, and you will have five minutes. Welcome.
Good morning. I am Rosie Schmidt. The drop boxes have to go. I implore you to watch 2,000 Mules. It's a little over an hour. A private citizen named Catherine Engelbreit, who was raked over the coals in 2014 for merely starting True the Vote and being a part of, I think, a lot of Tea Party activities. If you'll watch a really compelling testimony of hers from 2014 before the U.S. Congress, it's quite compelling how our government on the federal level targeted an individual person. It can happen to any of us. And no government will ever be in place that perfectly aligns with what we each believe, so we're all at risk if we don't rein in government tyranny like that. Citizens are irate, I will tell you. We all have our time and all these issues subdividing us. If you think this isn't a very large showing, well, rest assured that people are attending school board meetings, city council meetings, but we are all going to be there to vote on Election Day, so we're not going to be subdivided into that. Minimally, there should have been public discussion about these drop boxes. And if anything was done illegally by Commissioner Cruz or others, I know she spearheaded this, then citizens intend to pursue everything legal, legally available, to hold her and others accountable. I know at the state level, any election changes must go through the legislature. And I don't know specifically on the county level. Again, we're all busy fighting different fights. Freedoms are at risk. It's interesting to note that six of the 14 drop boxes are in Cruz's district alone. I implore you to watch 2,000 Mules. The drop boxes need to be dropped. I want to mention one thing that somebody else touched on, the Supreme Court justices are a real problem. Six of the seven are up for a revote, a retention vote, this year. What happens is, when they're put in place, in a year, they go up for a retention vote, and every six years after that. Ironically, six of the seven are up for a retention vote. We need to spread that word because they're a real problem. With the remainder of my time, I'd like to ask Commissioner Cruz to explain her actions regarding the vote and why it was put in place without any public discussion, and why six of the 14 are in her district alone.
This is public comment, and we listen to you.
Maybe she could address that during the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Steve Decker. Please approach podium and state your name for the record.
Somebody slipped their glasses, in case you're needing them here. My name is Steve Decker. I'm a District 5 resident southeast Wichita. I want to say thank you for this opportunity. As I'm just coming to the door and listening, I think you're going to hear the same message from me, so I would like to share a little bit about what I've been doing for the last month. I've been educating myself on Kansas election laws and election integrity. And I've got a whole curriculum. I'm looking at voter list maintenance, auditors and accountability, voter ID, ballot harvesting, advanced mail-in ballots, drop boxes, chain of custody. I'm also looking for the best ways to discuss the issue, and I also intend to take a tour of the election office. Today, I'm here to share observations about drop boxes and connect you with a body of constituents that are very concerned about election integrity. I've been concerned about election integrity for some time, particularly with the vote we have coming up August 2nd. It's a critical vote, and we want to make sure that, I'll just say, I know what our opposition is capable of. I'm teaching a biblical citizenship class right now. I've got 98 people of adult age, voting age, in the class. And I took a survey, and I've got a copy of the survey results. I'll leave with somebody that you can share. But there are 15 categories: sanctity of life, education reform, immigration, just to name a few. And when I was tallying up the results from the survey from this class, I was kind of shocked that the number one issue was election integrity. So I realized that after sharing the results with the class, it became very clear that without election integrity, our country is doomed. So I made a commitment to the class that I'd learn as much as I could on both sides of the issue, with the intent of hosting an election integrity event using credible subject matter experts. And I've talked to Janet Marlowe, who's been an election supervisor judge. I've talked to Blake Carpenter, District 81, House Representative, Mike Brown, candidate for Secretary of State, just trying to learn as much as I can about both sides of the issue. I understand that our current Secretary of State, Scott Schwab, does not believe there's a need for concern. He's even categorized people like me as domestic bad actors. As he also stated, he said the issues that identified in other states did not and cannot occur in Kansas. He goes on to say that the policy recommendations made by the host of the 2,000 Mules are already in place in Kansas. Voter ID, ban on ballot harvesting, and secure advanced mail-in ballot process. Now, Mr. Schwab also goes on to say that he's working with the Kansas Legislature to further strengthen election security measures, which to me means there's room for improvement. So I just want you to know, this is not a partisan issue. I and many others are concerned about election integrity, and to ignore this concern is to be disconnected with your constituents. However, we do agree that there are a need for immediate improvements. I also want you to know, we want to be part of the solution. We're voluntarily poll watchers, election workers, and we're encouraging people to vote in spite of their comments when they say, "Why should I vote? Because my vote won't count." But we are encouraging people to vote. So as stated earlier, I'd like to share my observations about the 14 drop boxes currently in place in Sedgwick County. In my research on both sides of the issue, I found the impetus for the drop boxes to be the possible spread of COVID and the overwhelmed postal service. And apparently, the Secretary of State decided the best cost-benefit alternative is drop boxes. But did that solution create a whole set of new problems and increase the opportunity to commit fraud? So considering the balance between secure election process and accommodations for voters needing assistance, I researched two state statutes, and I looked at the methods to monitor and control the security of the drop boxes. I'm sure you're familiar with the state statutes. They talk about advanced voting. It's State Statute 25-1128, talks about advanced voting, return ballots to the county election office, et cetera. And then Statute 25-2437 talks about the transmission or delivery of advanced voting ballots. As I read through that, I realized how difficult it's going to be to monitor and control those ballot boxes that are in various locations. So I thought, can anybody really do 100% manning of those ballot boxes during this time? And I found that Shawnee County does have 100% manned monitoring of the drop boxes, but they also don't have 14 drop boxes. So my final statement is, if we can't have a drop box be 100% secure at all times, I believe that it should be made inaccessible for the purposes of collecting advanced ballots. Bottom line, if it's worth doing, let's do it right. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Donna Lipold. Approach the podium. You will have five minutes.
Thank you very much. I appreciate being here and having the opportunity to represent a lot of the constituents in Sedgwick County. They're all over the nation. There's changes in the laws. Wisconsin just outlawed all drop boxes. In Topeka, Kansas, they have two drop boxes that are manned by both a Republican and a Democrat in person at all times. They are only available during the business hours, but I think it is 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. They are never left unmanned. Here in Sedgwick County, we visited the places and the locations. Some, five of them seemed very obscure to us and very easy to commit voter fraud. So we'd like to have some questions asked. Why 14? Johnson County has eight, and the sheriff of Johnson County, which I recently spoke to, is very highly involved in watching over the drop boxes. Wyandotte County has four. They are very much involved in watching over the drop boxes. It was a little over a week ago that I discovered that we had 14 drop boxes, and to be quite honest, I was utterly shocked. And then I found out that they are available 24/7. So we went and visited these little drop boxes with these little keys that look like a luggage key on them, and we are highly suspect. We also know that the funding, in Topeka, Kansas, they refused the money from Mark Zuckerberg. And I noticed in the accounting for Sedgwick County, the money came from the Center for Tech and Civic Life grant funding, which is Mark Zuckerberg. We don't really trust Mark Zuckerberg, and so it's awkward for us to imagine that our county decided to take the money and use it. And we have accounting here for all the money that was used from that grant. It was a lot of money. When I spoke to Chris Kobach, our former Secretary of State, he had a lot of prosecutions for voter fraud when he was Secretary of State. He won all of them. All of them. He proved that there was voter fraud in the previous elections. To say that there is no voter fraud in Kansas is just unreasonable and uneducated. So we have this statute, and this statute is 25-2437. In the statute, the Kansas statute says that it is absolutely illegal for anyone to turn in a ballot for someone else unless they have a signed statement that, it comes from the Secretary of State's, actually his website, that says they signed by the person that is turning in the ballot and signed by the voter. I don't understand how in the world you expect to do that. So therefore, we're looking into who will prosecute and who will be prosecuted for this felony when it occurs. And I know that you're probably aware of all of these statutes, but it just is unreasonable to think that when someone delivers something in a drop box, that they are actually going to have that stipulation and that statute observed and carried out. So we're trying to make communication with the district attorney. We're talking to the sheriff. The sheriff in Johnson County, like I said, I've spoken with him. He's very, very involved in watching over the drop boxes. I do believe that we deserve some answers, and I believe we deserve some public answers. Bottom line, we are here today asking you to remove all 14 drop boxes, and we would like to have a response coming soon. I'm sure. It would probably have to be discussed in executive session, but we, the public, want to know, and we want you to take action on this. Just let me check here and make sure I haven't forgotten anything. I think I've covered most everything. Just, we want transparency, and like, you can get this, all this information on the Zuckerberg grant on the website, Sedgwick County Election Office 2020 funding, and of course, all of the statutes are on the website for Kansas. So, all right. I can stand for questions if you have any.
Thank you. I don't have any questions. Thank you. Commissioner Howe, do you have any comments?
Yes, Chairman, I'd like to make some comments.
Yes, Chairman, I'd like to make some comments based on all the speakers. You don't have to stand there. I'm not going to ask you any questions directly. I do want to make some comments. There's two, obviously, two major topics today. One is regarding our discussion from last Wednesday, and the other one is a new one today. This deal deals a lot with election integrity and ballot boxes. So I'd like to address the ballot boxes first, and I think I'll stop talking at some point, and then I'd like to come back and maybe talk about the second topic as a separate issue. So just to get started on the ballot boxes, first of all, I have seen 2,000 mules, okay? So start with that. Donna, you called me a while back and said, "I'm a little disappointed in you, Jim, that you don't stand for election integrity." Let me just say, that is patently false. I am a champion for election integrity, and I take this issue very seriously. By the way, I didn't start this last month. I started this about eight or nine years ago. So this is not a new topic for me. Some of you may know, I've talked about this a lot. I've worked the elections as a supervising judge before I was an elected official. I learned a lot about elections, and I learned how things work. Back in the day, Elizabeth Clarkson, who was a statistician from WSU, actually addressed some anomalies in our data, and she was very concerned, and she actually sued Sedgwick County. I was on her side. I supported her in her efforts to fix some anomalies in our election data. As a county commissioner, we've done a couple of things. Number one, we actually went to the state of Kansas, helped draft a law, and testified in favor of that law. Me personally, went to Topeka numerous times, and we passed an election audit law. And I will take a little bit of credit for that because I think Sedgwick County led on that issue, and me personally, I led on the issue. So to someone to argue that I don't care about election integrity doesn't really know my history. Second thing I did, we did was, as a county, we opened up, we recognized the equipment that we had prior to 2016 was not able to be audited. It was, the courts ruled that you were not able to audit that because it would reveal, potentially reveal, the identity of a particular voter. If someone was observing the poll site, they could see a date and time on a particular machine, a machine number, and they could take that information back, and they could figure out who voted how. So that was the result, and consequently, they ruled that you could not audit those machines. We opened this up to the public, and we had, I don't know how many different vendors for election equipment, but the public themselves, including Beth Clarkson, came and helped us pick out our equipment for replacement. This equipment, every single ballot is a paper ballot, first of all. Every single paper ballot is retained for auditing purposes. The public put their hands on this equipment. They did a mock election, and they, for numerous opportunities, eventually picked the equipment we ended up purchasing, and we spent $7 million of property tax dollars in Sedgwick County to buy that equipment. It was actually designed to be audited. So when I hear people like Mike Lindell and Seth Keschel and Dr. Franks point the finger at Kansas, and especially Sedgwick County, and say, "We have election fraud in Sedgwick County," you've got my attention. And I'd like to find out exactly what it is they're talking about. Let me tell you, they look at old voter data. They, by the way, they've made comments that every single state, every single, sorry, every single county of every single state, every single precinct has widespread voter fraud. Now, that's a pretty bold statement. And it's not really data-based, it's simply an opinion, is the way I see this. But when they actually single, send Sedgwick County, I begin to wonder, what do they know about Sedgwick County? And I dug into this, and the end of the day, their data is based on what they think the results should have been, and they calculate what they think the error is. That's not, that's not smart. And I appreciate their desire to have integrity, and I do too. And by the way, my focus has been on Kansas. What happens in Pennsylvania and Arizona and other states? The electors of those states need to hold their legislators and their secretaries of state accountable to have the best laws. I know the Heritage Foundation of Election Integrity gave Kansas a bad grade. Do you know the very best of all the states? You know the state that had the best grade was Georgia. Georgia is one of the states that's in 2,000 mules. You see people dumping what appears to be lots of ballots in the ballot boxes, and yet they have the best grade in the country, and we have one of the worst grades in the country. I'll argue that I don't think Georgia is better than Kansas. I think Kansas is actually one of the best in the country, if not the best, with our election laws, and they can get better. And I am continuing to work with legislature to advocate for even better laws. The legislature this last year, as someone mentioned earlier, they looked at whether the election should be on, it should end at 7:00 on Tuesday, and they could not agree. They also looked at ballot boxes. I'm not sure right now if that law passed or did not pass, but they were talking about one ballot box for every 30,000 people. Do the math, and we have 526,000 people in Sedgwick County, we could have 19 ballot boxes by that law. We don't have 19, we have 14. By the way, the county commissioner was not asked whether we wanted ballot boxes. The money did not come from CTCL. The money came from the Help America Vote Act grant, which is taxpayer funds from the federal government to the state, and then given to the counties for the purposes of trying to find ways for people to vote during a pandemic. So the ballot boxes were purchased through taxpayer funds. You're right, the county did accept $816,000 from CTCL, which, by the way, I forced to vote, and I voted no. That aside, that money did not buy ballot boxes. I don't personally think we need ballot boxes. We never had them before. We don't really need them now, but they are taxpayer-funded, and they are in place. So the question is, do they create fraud? And I want to just be very clear. If they did, I would be the first in line to say, "Let's get rid of them." By the way, we don't have that authority. I've asked our legal, can we get rid of these ballot boxes? We didn't buy them, we didn't place them, we didn't have anything to do with putting them in. So you guys are asking us to vote no to get rid of ballot boxes. You actually are, I hate to say this, but we're not the ones that put them there.
Who did?
Please, you can't, pardon me?
I just said, who did then?
I'll explain that. So again, the HAVA grant went to the various counties, and the counties, the election commissioners, we have, well, it's most, 101 counties, the elected county clerk runs the elections. In four counties, including Sedgwick County, the election commissioner is appointed by the Secretary of State. Our election commissioner made a choice to spend that money to buy 14 ballot boxes. We have 20 cities in Sedgwick County, and so she placed them around the county, and she did that on her own. And by the way, she's no longer with Sedgwick County. Angela Cadillo is now our election commissioner. So this actually precedes Angela, and commissioners will not ask. I did ask legal, can we remove these boxes? The answer is no. It's not our business. So the end of the day, if you don't like ballot boxes, I agree, but you know what? This is a legislative issue, or it's a Secretary of State issue. But I mean, go back to my first point a minute ago. Do we actually think there's actual fraud? And again, let me argue a couple of things. I may be off on my numbers a little bit. We had about 88,000 mail ballots returned to the election office in the 2020 general election. Of those, less than 10% came through ballot boxes. Majority of those ballots were returned to the postal system. The ballot boxes are, I think it's either, I think it's at least once a day, but I think in some cases, it's twice a day. They actually send Republicans and Democrats in teams to those boxes. There is a set of keys, they have to open the box, they have to retain, get the ballots out, they have to count the ballots, and they have to agree on how many ballots we just picked up, put them in a secure container, and lock it up. It's a sealed container. If they have to stop to use the bathroom, for example, the person that leaves the vehicle must take the keys with them. They can't leave the keys with a single person with the ballots, it's part of a protocol. So the end of the day, there is a, there are policies in place to protect those ballots while they're being picked up and delivered to the election office. Go look at the ballot box in front of the county here. This slot is this wide. It's able to receive one or maybe two envelopes. So when you see another 2,000 mules people, you know, wheelbarrowing ballots in and shoving them by the box, by the box. That doesn't happen here because our ballot boxes are designed to receive one or two envelopes at the most. Go to the post office. How big is the slot on the post office box? It's this big. Put packages in it. And those mail ballots, the majority of them delivered by the post office, are mixed up with all kinds of other mail. And the person who picks up those ballots is probably a partisan, and they're by themselves, and there's no accountability. They don't count the ballots, they don't log them in, and they don't take them straight to the election office. They get processed through the postal system. In many places, in Kansas, those ballots actually leave the state and go to Denver or Missouri before they get delivered to their respective county election offices. So between the postal system and the drop boxes, I'll argue the drop boxes are actually better. I see someone going like, "No." Are you listening? Listen to me. The postal system has no accountability. Our drop boxes are open from 8:00 to 5:00 PM. They are monitored with cameras, and those cameras, if they find an anomaly, if someone vandalizes the box or does something that's an anomaly, they will be able to investigate and find out to the best of their ability to find out who did what. But they're not monitored by human beings. By the way, the legislature did contemplate having bipartisan teams monitor ballot boxes, but it was extremely expensive. I like small government, frankly. I do want security. Let's talk about the ballots themselves. 2,000 mules makes an assumption you're printing ballots in your basement, and there's no accountability, and you're just shoving these things in the ballot boxes, and they are counted. That is the furthest seek from the truth. You have to request a mail ballot. And Angela, I see you in the back of the room, can you please hand me a voter, a mail ballot application, please?
Sure.
To get a mail ballot in Kansas, you actually have to fill out one of these cards and send it in. You can do it online, but it does require personal identifiable information. The election office cross-references with the Department of Revenue, and so if you don't have, thank you, if you don't have a Kansas driver's license or a state ID card or provide the last four of your social and a signature, you're not going to get a ballot. So you have to request a ballot on a card, and it is scrutinized, and they have to, they cross-reference your personal information with the Department of Revenue. So if you fill it out correctly, and the signature matches, their signature on record, and you provide the correct information, you can get one ballot. That ballot, when you fill it out and return it to the election office, it has to be returned in the proper envelope that they give you. If you put it in a regular envelope and send it in, we will not accept that ballot. It must be returned in the envelope that we provided to you to return it in, and that envelope is pre-printed with your name and your address, and I think your voter ID, and there's also a barcode. Thank you.
These are secured, so I will need to collect these.
I will get them back to you. Thank you. So I asked her to bring this over, we can take a look at this. This is actually return the ballot in. So this is very specific. It's multicolored, the security feature is built into this. If you wanted to return the envelope and a ballot box, you'd have to have one of these, and it has to have your name pre-printed on it. But the very first thing the election office does when they get the ballot is, did we send you a ballot? If we didn't send you a ballot and you're returning a ballot, we'll not accept it. For a fact, that would actually trigger an investigation because that can't happen, and never has happened. So the end of the day, if you want to return a ballot through a drop box or through the postal system, you've got to go through this scrutiny. They verify the signature, it's got to be in the proper envelope with the proper information pre-printed on the envelope. So again, the idea that you're printing ballots in your basement and you're dumping them in ballot boxes at 1:00 in the morning, how many ways can I say that does not happen? I am a champion for election integrity and security. Believe me, I am, no offense to anybody in this room, I've been doing this for a very long time. And if this was a source of major fraud, or really, I'd say any fraud, I would be all over it. Now, I do think there's things we can do to make this better. Let me say once again, I don't like ballot boxes, we don't need them, but taxpayers paid for them. If there's fraud, if there's fraud through ballot boxes, we should get rid of them. I've asked Mike Brown, I've asked Chris Kobach, I've asked Scott Schwab, I've asked people who are on your side, again, you say your side. I think we're together on so many things, okay? I don't think we're opposite sides, but I want you to have, I want you to have the proper information and understand what you're talking about, rather than being led down a path and you believe that the elections are being stolen by things you should see on 2,000 mules. That's not what happens in Kansas. The end of the day, I've asked them, is there any evidence, actual evidence of voter fraud through ballot boxes? And not one person has ever given me a single piece of evidence of voter fraud in Kansas through ballot boxes. Let me say again, I don't think we need them, I don't like them, I don't want them, we didn't place them, but you're asking us to get rid of them, which we have no authority to do. I want you to know, someone who, one of the final comments was, "Please vote because your vote really matters." I agree. The people who are saying that there's such widespread fraud, you're telling people, "Don't vote because your vote doesn't matter." I want people to vote. Desperately want people to vote. And if people think their vote doesn't matter, they may not show up. My message to them is, we have great laws, and we have great processes, and we have checks and balances throughout the entire system. And ballot boxes, as much as they're the focus of, so much attention right now, the bigger problem is the postal system. Because there's so many things in place to even make the ballot boxes way more secure than the postal system. I sent out a card for an unrelated issue a while back, and I was getting the return to sender because it was undeliverable. I'm still getting those postcards months after I sent them out. And the election office will tell you, sometimes they get ballots from the postal system, we don't know where they were, but they were returned to the postal, to the election office way after the election because they knew they were never delivered. Let me say one thing that's most important to everybody should hear this. Your ballot is your responsibility to get it to the election office. It's not the postal system's responsibility, it's your responsibility, and they should be delivered on time for your vote to count. We get a lot of ballots that get delivered after the cutoff, which is a big discussion now, and my opinion is, that's not the government's problem, that's the electorate's problem. Your job is to get your ballot to the election office on time, and you need to make sure you pick a process that you trust. And by the way, you can also go online and verify they received your ballot and that your ballot was counted. That's public information. And there's so many more things I would like to say. I've got about a 90-page PowerPoint. The gentleman from my district, I've got a 90-page PowerPoint. Number one issue is election integrity. Please let me come and present that to your group. I will give you so much more information than what's been presented here today. And by the way, you always raise a lot of great questions. I'm out of time, I've talked way too long. I could talk for hours on this topic, but why don't you understand ballot boxes are not the source of the fraud that you're worried about. I don't like them, we don't need them, but that's not, please stay focused. The issue is, there's a lot of other issues, but Kansas, and especially Sedgwick County, we're doing it right. Now, I want people to know, their vote does count, and it does matter, please vote, and we do have accurate elections in Sedgwick County. By the way, that audit bill, we audit the elections, we do a pre-audit, we do a post-audit. If there's a single error on that post-audit, we have to expand the audit broader, and if a second error happens, it's the full count of the entire county. So we have a very high standard for accuracy in Sedgwick County. I'll tell you what I think the biggest problem is right now. Mail ballots are, people can't follow instructions, and there's lots of ballots thrown out because they forget to sign their name, they put two ballots in the same envelope, we can't count that if that happens, and on it goes. We have to, you come to canvassing, by the way, it's public inspection, and we do canvassing in public. It takes hours. The public generally doesn't seem to care about this too much. We throw out a lot of ballots because of all kinds of things that are wrong. People aren't registered, but they vote anyway, and on it goes. They vote provisional, and we have to deal with those provisional ballots. Signatures don't match, whatever. End of the day, we care deeply about integrity. And by the way, there's one more thing I would say. Those 14 ballot boxes, those locations were selected by the election commissioner, not Commissioner Cruz, okay? I'll defend her in this case for sure, because no commissioners had a conversation with where to place these ballot boxes. So the fact that there's six in one district doesn't really matter. I have a very urban district, some of the commissioners have more rural districts, and they put these things in places where it made sense to the election commissioner, but it was not something we had some control over. I could talk a long time, I've already talked a long time, I'm going to stop myself. If you have questions about election integrity, listen, please email me, give me your name and your phone number and your address, I will reach out to you, I promise you I will, and I'll have a much more extensive discussion, I'll show you my PowerPoint, and I'll come present to your group. I love election integrity. Donna Lipold, I love it. I'm a champion of election integrity. But let's not be misguided, let's not be, just don't believe someone else's narrative. Please be data-driven. I am data-driven. I really am. And I want you to know, I care more about this than anybody else that I know, and this is a huge issue for me. Mr. Chairman, I would like to ask if there's anything Angela Cadillo would like to say that I've not addressed, she may have heard something that she wants to address. Would it be okay for her to speak at this time?
One thing that was mentioned during public comment that wasn't addressed by you, and maybe Angela wants to address it, are keys. I heard that we can use luggage keys to open up those ballot boxes, so I want to make sure that we address that those are very secure keys.
Thank you. Angela Cadillo, you're Sedgwick County Election Commissioner. To answer your question, Mr. Chairman, those keys are not luggage keys. They are specifically keyed for each box. You can't actually take keys from one box to another box, which our staff who checks the boxes will tell you, because if they grab the wrong set of keys, then they have to get the correct one before they can open it. It's two keys at the same time required to open the box, and we do send people out in teams of two. They cannot be the same party in order to do those collections.[1766.33] So, I have received several emails and the emails are kind of a copy and paste email, but I will just give kind of a response to some of the questions that I've had on that if you feel that's appropriate, Mr. Chairman. Okay. So Sedgwick County does have 24-hour secure ballot drop boxes. They are opened on the day that we send out ballots and they are closed simultaneously at 7:00 PM on Election Day. We send out teams of bipartisan, bipartisan teams to each box and they are waiting there and at 7:00 PM, they lock the flap closed so that no more ballots can be deposited. During the time that they are in operation, we have security cameras up that take video of anything that's happening and we can look at that video if we suspect a problem, if there's vandalism, we can get a hold of that video and check and see if anything happened. Those locate, sorry, those 14 drop boxes were located across the community by the previous election commissioner. The intention was to try and find as many public buildings as possible that already had video surveillance and those that did not, they added video surveillance for. In order to receive an advance by mail ballot in Kansas, by the way, which is the law, anyone can receive that, who's a registered voter, it's called no excuse voting, so it's no excuse mail ballot, that is a state law. In order to receive that ballot, you have to fill out an application, that's the application I gave you. On that application, you need to include your Kansas driver's license number or your Kansas ID number. If you do not have that ID number, which by the way allows us to match you in the system, if you do not have that ID number, then you must enclose a photocopy of your government-issued valid photo ID. After that, we take that application, we look through it, we verify it, we make sure it's accurate and see that you're available or eligible to receive a ballot, we check the signature and match your signature to your signatures on file. If everything checks out and you're eligible to receive a ballot, we will send that ballot in the mail. That ballot, as you mentioned, does have to come back in a specific envelope. Someone had asked about the signature, the statement saying if you're dropping off someone else's ballot and thought that would be cumbersome, we made it easy, it's an affidavit right on the envelope itself, so that person has to sign it. They are not allowed by law to do more than 10, so that's why the signature is there. The voter has to sign the envelope. When we get these back, the first thing we do, as you said Commissioner Howes, we check to see that you requested a ballot. If you didn't request a ballot, we stop there. That would be a cause for investigation. Once we see that you've requested a ballot, the next thing we do is we check and make sure everything is filled out properly. If it is not filled out properly, we stop, we cannot process it. So sometimes, and you will see this in canvassing, you will see envelopes that have been signed incorrectly. Two people living in the same household may sign different envelopes, we can't process those. We have to wait. We send a letter to the voters asking them to come in or we send a copy where they can re-sign so we can check those signatures. The bottom line is, if the signature on the envelope doesn't match the signature on your file, we stop and we cannot process it. In order for, to make sure that nobody votes twice, once this comes in and it has been verified, we process it and then it goes to a board that opens it at the appropriate time. This prevents someone from voting by mail and then voting advance in person. So there are plenty of security features in place in order to get an advance by mail ballot. And then I would just say that with drop boxes, we do have pickups every day. As I mentioned, we do send bipartisan teams, they are required to sign chain of custody logs, which is not something we can get the post office to do. The post office does not sign a chain of custody log every time they take a ballot out of a post office box. And so we have very strict procedures in place in order to make sure that those ballots that are collected are the same ones that arrive, are the same ones that get processed. Is that helpful?
Yes. Angela, you might want to let the public know that vote canvass is when the actual election is certified by the five people that you see sitting before you. Although, since this is an election, it's got several of their names on the ballot, most of the time we recuse ourselves and find an alternate, so I don't know what, who the five people are today will be sitting on the vote canvas. But that's going to be held on August the 11th at 9:00 AM. One other thing I might want to suggest to you is that at times when there is a question that might have a lot of public scrutiny, we move the vote canvas up to the old courtroom upstairs rather than in the small room that we normally do vote canvas. As most of our vote canvases, we may have one or two people, sometimes a couple news, but beyond that, we do the vote canvas in a fairly small room because we don't have too much public interest in it. But this one, I think we're going to have a lot of public interest in it, we may want to look at the location, that's up to you, you set that up and we just attend, so. But I do want everyone to know that that is the day that we certify it. Now let me talk a little bit about the vote canvas that I see from my point of view. The votes when you go up in person, we don't look at any of those because those were counted. Not one single machine, and I heard some people complaining about things that are hooked to the internet, using thumb drives and so forth, not one of our voting machines is ever hooked to the internet. They are secure. So, the ones that go through the automatic machines, when you vote in person, we do a count, make sure that this is the number of people voted on that, this is the number of ballots that are in that container and those votes automatically get counted. Now, so what happens at vote canvas? I don't know how many of you have ever attended a vote canvas, but the five commissioners or their substitutes will sit in a room and Angela and her staff will come up with baskets full of votes. I'm talking baskets full, with hundreds of votes in these baskets. And these are ones that the election commissioner, the election officials had a question on. They forgot to sign the, and all we're looking at is that envelope, I don't have, I didn't take one because they're monitored on the number. But we don't open those. It's not like you saw on TV during Florida where you're looking for Chad and you're scrutinizing a ballot. We don't see the ballot. We see the outside of that envelope. And it amazes me at how many are in these boxes that we go through. She'll come up with a, she categorizes them for us, which is very nice. We don't have to look at every one, we look at a stack of them. And then we pass that stack around and each one of us verifies that that's what happened on that ballot. Someone will forget to sign it. We won't count those. Soon as, soon as we take a look at that, say they didn't sign it, that whole stack goes off and they're not counted. A husband will sign for a wife or a wife will sign for a husband. That's not legal. She'll point that out to us, we'll verify that that's what happened, that whole stack will go off to the side. We will not count them. Now, your signature's on file. Somebody will sign your name, but it's not your signature. We verify that. She points out this stack of ballots was signed by someone, but it wasn't the person that signed it. Those are thrown out. We don't count those. So, I could go. I'm sorry? Looks like my battery is dying. I could go on because there are a whole stack of reasons why that we don't count ballots. But in some cases, we do count them when there's a question because we scrutinize them very closely. Say, they said that this person didn't sign this ballot. Well, we look at three or four samples of your signature if there's really a question on it and then we make a decision and we write on the top independently on that ballot, yes, count this, no, don't count this, and then we look in the majority rules. So, I feel extremely confident. Oh, by the way, inside of that envelope, which we don't look at, those were printed, if you look at your absentee ballots, you're not going to end up counterfeiting that. And besides, if you'd counterfeited it and you tried to send in ballots for a bunch of dead people, we're not Chicago, remember, if you send in a bunch of ballots for people that aren't registered or that did register and they're the wrong ones, they get thrown out anyway because of all the other reasons that I've specified already. So do I believe that our ballots are absolutely accurate? Absolutely. And come and see it. Remember, August 11th, 9:00 AM, see how the process works, how that we verify that they're doing their job and that we verify that every single vote that was an accurate vote was cast and we can count it, or if we think that there is anything whatsoever wrong with that ballot, we do not count it. So I am confident in our election. So, I don't know if Commissioner Howes has any other comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I was listening to some of the other comments, I just want to circle back. So again, maybe just point out once again, that it requires personal information. Teresa, by the way, I talked to a nice lady the other day and she said, I got like four or five ballots in the mail. I said, well, maybe those were ballot applications. And she said, oh, maybe you're right. Let me just explain that. This is a ballot application, it's not a ballot, okay? This is also a ballot application, mail ballot application. So, you might get from different groups, if you're a member of a union, they might send out a ballot application to their union members, for example, trying to get them out to vote. On it goes. I mean, people will send you all kinds of ballot applications, those are not ballots. If you fill out 10 ballot applications, you're only going to get one ballot, okay? But the most important thing on here is, your personal information has to be on here and your signature. And they will cross-reference this with the Department of Revenue and verify that you provide the correct information or you will not get a ballot. You only get one ballot. And so there's that information. And then, when you return the ballot, it requires, again, a signature once again of that voter. So if everything doesn't match, we're not going to accept it. So, there are some security things built in place. Now, there are some legislative things we can do, we can't do it. Legislative things we can do to actually tighten this up even more. And again, if you want to have a conversation, please let me know and I'll come and tell you some great ideas to tighten up things even further, okay? And I would like to have some support on making things better. I'll just tell you one thing is, my wife was in the legislature last year, she actually had an integrity law that would have actually been a good law and she seemed to have really good support for it. Not one person testified in favor or against that law. So when people talk about election integrity, you need to be engaged through the legislature especially to change our laws. That bill didn't go anywhere because people didn't care about it. But it was, even the Secretary of State says, that's a pretty good idea. But we didn't, never went forward because no one thought this was important. So if you guys want to fix our laws, the legislature is the best place to start. But in terms of what we have access to here, there's not a lot we can do, we're not already doing. And finally, I, sorry, we can't go back and forth here, I'm sorry. But also, I heard someone talk about dirty voter rolls. Let's talk about that for just a second. I just bought the entire state of Kansas election data again last week, I do it all the time. It's expensive. It's over two million lines, approximately two million lines of data. And I like to analyze that. I do a lot of analysis on that data, especially for Sedgwick County, especially for my district. I know there are some errors in that data. First of all, we cannot remove people from the voter rolls without following a very lengthy and arduous process. You can't just take people off because you don't think they should be on there. You have to go through a very long process to get someone off that role. And if someone dies, we find their obituary, or if they move out of state and their election office in their other state contacts our election office, or the voter contacts us, they can update that role. At the end of the day, this is a handwritten form, and someone's got to transcribe that information and type it into our database. Sometimes they misspell a name. Sometimes they, maybe the person gave the wrong birth date, and somehow they got, or maybe the person typed the wrong birth date. There are things that happen. There's also some people who registered so long ago, we didn't require birth dates. Look at their voter rolls, it says 1/1/1904, 1900, 1900. And they're 123 years old. Well, we know that's not true. But the reality is, when they registered 80 years ago, the birth date wasn't required. So at the end of the day, I spent a lot of time on this. I found some errors on some birth dates. But here's the point. Are people exploiting that voter roll to do mass fraud? Someone used the word fraudulent, somebody else used the word crooked. We have bad elections in Sedgwick County. And again, the dirty voter rolls is how they do this. Let me just tell you, the voter rolls are really pretty good. I'd say they're not perfect, but I'll bet they're 99.9% accurate, and that 0.1%, let's fix it. It's just, it's a human process, and you've got to go find those errors manually, and it takes time to get them fixed. And by the way, we don't do that either. The election office does that, Secretary of State does that, and I agree, we ought to have perfect voter rolls. Perfect is probably too high of a standard. So once again, I care deeply about this topic. I'm with you. I want the same thing you want. I want election integrity. But let's stay focused on where the real problems are. Legislation are biggest opportunity. And other states like Pennsylvania and Arizona, they've got a lot of work to do. All right. Thank you, Chairman, for the chance to speak. And I have another topic I'd like to talk about when we're moving away from elections. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Angela, do you have anything that you need to add? Any clarification?
The only other thing that I did forget to mention that I think is of note is that every staff member in my office who will be processing ballots and advanced applications has undergone signature verification training. So we do have education on that. And that's just something that I had forgotten to mention to you earlier. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Well, I actually, I want to thank everyone that came to speak today. I believe in election integrity, but I believe we have it. And hopefully, we've had an opportunity to help educate you on exactly what we're doing here in Sedgwick County to ensure that we have election integrity. But I truly understand your passion in this, and I appreciate you spending the time to come, to speak with us today, and to express your concerns about this. This is what our elected democracy government is based on. This is the foundation of how that we govern our local, state, national areas. So I wore the uniform for 29 years to make sure that everyone has their opportunity to be American citizens and to exercise their right to vote. And thank you very much for coming. I know we spent a lot of time on this, but it's an important issue, and we needed to make sure that everyone understands this important issue. And thank goodness that KPTS and our online through Facebook and YouTube is able to get this out to the public so that they have an opportunity to hear what we have to say. Again, if you have detailed questions beyond this, our resident expert is Commissioner Howell. And I'm not trying to pass the buck. You're always welcome to send an email to any one of us and ask questions. But I'm hoping that we've answered your questions. And again, thank you for being here. I don't want to discount what anyone said whatsoever. I just wanted to make sure you understood that we believe that we are doing a great job here in Sedgwick County, and that our elections are valid, and that we have the integrity, and we can rely on the accuracy. So we're going to move on to other subjects now. Thank you very much. You can stay and hear the rest of the meeting, but thanks again for being here today. And Commissioner Howell, you had another item to discuss.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I'd like to talk a little bit about some of the comments were made today regarding last week's discussion. I raised the issue last week, I think it was, I don't remember how we got into the topic, but nevertheless, I wanted to raise the issue of taxpayer-funded newsletters going out that I felt were objectively and factually incorrect. The statement of concern was the phrase, and again, I'm paraphrasing now because I don't have it in front of me, but what I remember it said was that if the amendment would pass, that it would eliminate secure and safe abortions in Kansas. Again, I may be close when I say it that way. My concern was, I did contact counselor to verify whether or not there was anything that should be done or could be done, but I felt like something was misstated. It was objectively wrong. I think it was misleading. Would the amendment, through the legislature, pass different laws? Potentially, yes. But the amendment itself doesn't do that. The amendment itself either leaves this in the hands of the courts or puts it in the hands of the legislators. That's really what the amendment's about, is who do you want to have the authority to create laws or to create policy for our state? I went back and watched that meeting numerous times. I believe that during the entire meeting, I was professional and respectful and kind. I was not ugly. I didn't raise my voice. I care deeply for my colleagues. I want to know, I appreciate everything they do. I wasn't trying to be ugly in any way. So when Diane Leffler says I was ugly, and what was the other word she used? Disingenuous, I guess. I don't think that I was. I did not control what Patrick Penn or Susan Humphries said. They weren't here because I told them to come, and I didn't tell them what to say. They shared their personal opinion, as everybody here today has done. They shared their opinion. And we certainly encourage them, we encourage everyone to share their opinion. We would not have gone there at all as a commission, I don't believe, had a newsletter not gone out with this information. If the newsletter said, "I want you to vote," please know there's a voting deadline to register to vote, and there's something coming up, and it had neutral, accurate, non-biased information regarding the ballot question, I would have not said a word. But asking someone to know about the election and registering to vote's one thing, but giving a personal statement about it would eliminate secure and safe abortions in Kansas is an opinion. And that's not what it would do. It would give it to the legislature. Who knows what they will do? At the end of the day, I have to sit back and say, "I don't know that I agree with the word 'secure.'" I mean, we hear the words "safe" and "secure" elections. Those words almost run together. You think about what does that actually mean? And as I sat there and thought about this, number one, the word "would," I think, is the wrong word there. But I think about what is a secure abortion? I don't even know what that means. And if you want to talk about the word "safe abortion," you could talk about the fact there's two human beings involved. It's never safe for one of them. So I don't like that language. I think it's inappropriate. And I think the reality is that we sent out the neutral information that was actually NHCR 5003, that's actually on the ballot question, and we had a five-to-zero vote. So again, I don't think I need to apologize. I just need to, and by the way, I never used my colleague's name during the discussion. I simply said, "It's not okay to objectively and factually mislead someone on something like a ballot question." And by the way, I did advocate last December, when people were having mental health issues, that for me personally, I've really enjoyed being involved in a church, a local church. I suggested people could go to local churches as a way to maybe get some help during the Christmas season. That's my opinion. I also suggested in a recent newsletter that I think that the form of government, we have representative government, people elected, these are very important parts of government, I think that's a better form of government than people being appointed to those positions. That's my opinion. I shouldn't be able to give you my opinion on a ballot question and actually misrepresent, if you will, what the ballot question does. There's my problem. So that's why I raised the issue. It's not, I'm not attacking anybody. I just want to be accurate, fair, unbiased, professional, kind. And I think that that's the goal, that was the goal last Wednesday. And I'm sorry people thought, by the way, I did not ask ethics for an investigation. No matter what Diane thinks, I did. I did not ask them to contact state ethics. I did ask my counselor for an opinion, and they decided to contact ethics, which was, again, a fine idea. It's never wrong to contact ethics, but that wasn't at my request. So once again, I just want to be clear, and appreciate the comments today. I don't think that this is a county commission issue. We probably shouldn't be talking about this at all, but here we are. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you very much. To ensure election integrity, Angela, could you pick up any of the envelopes that are accounted for?
Yes, please.
Okay. I believe she only had two, so all of the ballot envelopes are accounted for. That concludes our public agenda. I want to let commissioners know that last night, we received 42, I believe, online. They dealt with ballot boxes. I think we've addressed that today. But we're not going to vote on those today because we just got them all sorted out this morning before the meeting, and although commissioners have not had an opportunity to read those 42. So we will vote on those next week, or week after, in two weeks when we come back. But I just wanted everyone to know that there were some that come online, and we will not be considering those. So at this time, I move that we receive and file public agenda. We have a motion and a second to any discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Madam Clerk, can you go back and recall item hotel?
Item H, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts, regular meeting on July 7, 2022.
Thank you. We've voted earlier to defer that until we've had an adequate answer. We have Jim Weber in the audience, and he can answer Commissioner Howell's questions.
Thank you for reconsidering this. I'm not, it sounds bad, but I'm okay. But you had a question about a utility relocation. This is a case where the utility is a rural water district. We also have this problem with rural electric, where when they initially go in, they have a preference, and they have good cooperating landowners. They'll put their facilities and private utilities right next to their road right-of-way. And then when we come back later, and we need to expand the right-of-way, and this particular project is for the cotton warehouse down at Clearwater, it's the 95th Street project. We go to expand the right-of-way. We buy on top of the pre-existing easements. That's fine, but they have the prior right, and so if we want them to move or need them to move, we end up paying them to move their utility out of our way. Often, they'll get more private easement behind that and move it out there. We do have them in some places. They always have the option to go in the public right-of-way, but they have a preference probably because of this little feature where we get to pay them to move this time. They have a preference for being in private. If they had been in the public right-of-way, our permit sets it up so that we literally tell them, "You need to get out of the way," and at their expense, they move. So we're, we have to deal with them like a private property, and I guess is the best way to look at it.
All right. Well, that answers my question. Thank you, Chairman. I've got to make a motion at the appropriate time.
Please make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion. We would accept the recommendation of the Board of Bids and Contracts for item one regarding the utility relocation.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And in a moment, I'm going to call for executive session, but we have a large number of staff and individuals in here that last week, I understood, didn't have any chairs because we've moved off this floor, and they were sitting on the floor. So I ask them to please take a chair out in the hallway with them so that you're not uncomfortable during the executive session. But with that, Madam Clerk, please call the next item.
Executive session.
Thank you. Commissioner Lopez.
I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 15 minutes until 10:50 for preliminary discussions relating to the acquisition of real property for the purpose of buying a county building, and that the Board of County Commissioners return to this room from executive session at 10:50.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And we are in recess for executive session at this time. And staff, please take a chair. I don't want you sitting on the floor out there, okay? Thank you, Angela. Appreciate you coming over.
I think I'm staying.
Oh, that's true.
You did get stayed.